Council Subcommittee on Ordinances and Legislation will now come to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadim, Counselor Dionne.
Here.
Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Pereira.
Here.
Chair LaBide LaBeau.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item is citizens' input, and we received two emails. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. I am speaking to you regarding the potential composting program effort which has been spearheaded by City Councilor Trot Lee and has been referred to this committee. The idea of this composting program and streamlining our city's waste is a really great idea for our community, and I credit the counselor and our Director of Community Maintenance for bringing this idea to the table. However, with that being said, there are many issues with this proposal. There have been many counselors, especially Counselor Lee, who mentioned the phrase protecting the taxpayer in every other sentence they say. However, under the current proposal, I discovered through a Freedom Information Act request that the composting bins were paid for through city grant funds, otherwise known as taxpayer funds. We obviously know, especially short term with COVID, that there are people in our community that are struggling. What we should have done is place this trash grant money into fee reductions on another way or another way to give the taxpayers a break. However, we now supposedly have the bins. We took money out of the taxpayers' left pocket. We are now going to take money out of their right pocket by placing a $25 fee per bin. We charge taxpayers twice for one bin. Additionally, these bins are expensive, and we get no discount for ordering large quantities as discovered in my Freedom of Information Act request. Lastly, as discovered in my request, and I was absolutely shocked to see Counselor Lee support this, the composting bins would require users to purchase and use pay-as-you-throw-backs. For this composting program, we should not require any fee for the composting bins. We should not be double-charging taxpayers. Lastly, we should not be purchasing bins that require citizens to buy trash bags. Thank you very much, Colin Diaz.
Counselor Pereira.
I think I'd like to add to that that Mr. Diaz wrote that when you get a grant, the grant is site-specific for the issue of whatever you write the grant for. So if they wrote a grant to get composting bins, that money needs to be spent on composting bins. And perhaps Mr. Collins, Mr. Diaz doesn't know that.
Correct.
But that's why. The only calls that I've gotten about those bins is that because it hasn't been through the ordinance committee and back to council, people have wanted to go down and get them, and they couldn't. So maybe we can put that, because it's not on this agenda, but we have another meeting coming up. Maybe you could put it on at that meeting.
Sure. Do you yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Counselor.
Just correct me if I'm wrong. The email said something about trash fees?
It said...
Reduction of fees?
Yeah, it said perhaps beside, where is it? What we should have done is place this trash grant money into fee reductions.
So it's trash? There's no trash fee, right?
Right, or another way to give the taxpayers a break.
In another realm of fees?
It doesn't say, Counselor.
Okay. The other thing, and again, I'm open to that. I'm open to reduction of, you know me, right? But I think that also, I'd like, I mean, if someone, if someone tells me that that's an expensive venture, I've looked up prices. I didn't come up with that price. I just want people to know that that wasn't my number. However, $25 for the bin is comparatively, a relatively decent price to other places because if you look around a little bit, even if you just do a simple search for commercial composting bins, that's a fair price. And if, and if anyone, not just the person who wrote the letter, but anyone else who has a different figure or a different way to bring the cost down or anything like that, I'd like to see it myself, and I can present it to Mr. Perry, or you can present it to Mr. Perry yourselves. I have no problem with that. If the, if the email is a genuine email about actual trying to make things better, I have no problem working with anybody on that. But we know when some of these things come down the line, you know, it's a different agenda sometimes, so with that, I yield.
This will be on our next agenda if anyone has questions or wants to submit citizens' input. The next letter. Dear Counselors, first let me say it has been an honor and... Is this supposed to be for tonight's meeting? For ordinance?
Yes, that's what she requested.
Okay. Dear Counselors, first let me say it's been an honor and privilege to be on the Park Board. We have worked extremely hard getting the Park and Cemetery up and back on track with MGL and city ordinance. Joe Schulenberg and myself have not resigned. When I was appointed, I thought I was serving a five-year term. My term would be up in 2023. You can clearly see it was a five-year term because my proposed replacement states a five-year term. My question is, what did we do wrong to be removed? Is working for all the taxpayers wrong? In January, I requested a meeting with the mayor and Corporation Council. Anne O'Neill attended as well. This was to speak with Corporation Council regarding an opinion in reference to MGL 45, Section 2. The mayor did not know anything about MGL 45 and researched it on his phone. See attached letters from Corporation Council. On August 1st, 2018, the chairman was Jeff Silva. We voted for a five-year term in good faith. The minutes of this meeting can be requested from the city clerk. We did this to protect the board members from political retaliation. We took this vote for the, for this exact reason, to protect us from what is happening now, i.e. political retaliation. The prior administration was always waiting to hear what the board was voting on. This was initiated when the prior administration was constantly bullying the board on their actions on Park Cemetery issues. It has been nearly two years since that vote was taken, and we question now. Please keep in mind that I did not receive my hard copy letter from the mayor until July 10th. I have heard my reasons why they were removing Joe and myself. The letter states my removal is effective June 22nd, 2020. Mayor Coogan stated he wanted to go in a different direction, but he is keeping members that have been on for years. I fear I am being removed because I ask too many questions, for example finances, contracts, et cetera. All we did was that we wanted to follow MGL. Is that wrong to ask? Please know that I signed two contracts for the cemetery upcoming projects on 6/24/20. I did not find out until Mrs. Smith emailed me stating she was told I could not submit the board's, board's agenda for July. I then emailed the city clerk, and she sent me the letter of termination date 6/22/20. Confusing because we both were still working on Park Cemetery items. In closing, it is my position that pursuant to state law provided below, that Joe and I are still legally members of the Park Board Commission unless or until we are removed by two-thirds vote of the City Council. Unfortunately, both Joe and I are being prevented from holding meetings to conduct park business with a lack of a quorum. Meetings cannot take place. I am asking for support from the City Council to retain my slash our seats on the Park Board to continue to work on behalf of the taxpayers of this community in which we so enjoyed. Respectfully submitted, Martin C. Yekid. And then there's backup with the MGL law.
I have just, just a question about that.
Counselor, yes.
Are we allowed, I mean, right now, we're not, we're not handling that on the agenda right now.
No, that's why I asked if it was supposed to come tonight, but I can tell you it was supposed to be on last night's agenda.
Right.
Counselor Dionne and myself met with the mayor prior to yesterday's meeting. Seems like it was so long ago, Tuesday's meeting. And Counselor Dionne had done a lot of research over the weekend on that particular law.
2014, right?
There's parameters surrounding when you can, what time of year you can remove somebody. Corporation Council is away this week. While he had given the mayor some prior case law, I think it was from the '60s, we weren't really comfortable with proceeding with the mayor's wishes until we get it all sorted out, so it's...
So when we, when we have the right, the right time for that, we'll, we'll address that correspondence.
I mean, you can make a comment now if you'd like.
Well, I just, I mean, I think the most obvious thing is that if a person was presumably, presumably removed from this, you know, position before her tenure, then obviously something's wrong here. And who would be the body outside of the City Council to, to look at that? Would it be an Ethics Board? Would it be something to that nature?
I believe it would be Corporation Council because as Counselor Dionne has found, there is obviously, our city ordinances are in conflict with mass general law. Mass general law would supersede those, but, correct me if I'm wrong, any removals would have to be done prior to a date in May and require a two-thirds vote of the council. So here we are in July, and...
Right.
May's already passed.
Right.
So we have questions on if that can even come before us and, or not. Do you want to add anything on that?
Yeah, well, essentially, yes. We've been in nonconformance since 1986. And the last time it was revised was in 2008, and we were still noncompliant in 2008. So there were a lot of conflicting issues. There was a question as to what came first, the chicken or the egg, in essence, because you had people who were presumed to be put on sixth, who maybe in reality was put on seventh, but then maybe really was put on fifth. So the whole thing was just so convoluted, and there was so much contradictory information that we felt the best thing to do was table it and try to sort through it and get everything on track correctly. And also, including, there's at least three times in the mass general law that it states a removal has to be before the first Monday in May. Somebody can, has to be put on in their place the first Monday before May. Their term, if they're put, had this all been done initially properly, which we don't even know that, when this board was set up, it should have been set up with five people, and in succession, one person having a one-year term, two-year term, three-year term, up to a five-year term, so that nobody expires on the same day or in the same year.
Can have a, you know, can have a...
But even that has run into a problem. So once you have all five people in place, when somebody before the first Monday in May is put on, there, they automatically have a five-year term that begins the first Monday in May.
That time, yeah.
So that's why it just was, we just felt was just too much.
So...
Go ahead with that, I yield. Do you yield, Counselor? Counselor Lee?
Before anyone was even removed from their position or assumed removed from their position, they should have had that resolved before they went forward with that, I think, to even put anything on the agenda for us on Tuesday.
Well, I think it needs a council vote to be removed.
Right, and, and we didn't even have that, so with that, I yield.
I asked about it with the mayor, the briefing that I was in with Counselor Pelletier this week for the last council meeting. Attorney Rumsey was there, and we asked about it. I've got to tell you that I'm taking this a little personal because CJ Ferry went on that Fall River Raw and said it was one of the female counselors that talked to the mayor, and then he said she didn't support her when she ran for mayor, and she told the mayor to get rid of her. And I had Helen Rego call me that. Did you call the mayor to get rid of me and Massey? I had not had a conversation with the mayor about the Park Board. I knew nothing about what he was going to do with the Park Board. So when we had the briefing and Rumsey, Attorney Rumsey was there, he went over every single appointment that was made, and some of the appointments that were made didn't even have expiration dates.
That is correct.
And he explained that the vote that they took back in 2018, I believe it was August of 2018, that that vote, the board voted to give themselves a five-year term. The board can't vote the length of the term that they are to serve. That is like Michelle said earlier, like Counselor Dionne, sorry, said earlier. It should be when one is expiring each time. But Attorney Rumsey said he had researched that, and it was good to go. So now if you had a conversation with him after the briefing we had, we had a briefing on Friday.
So our briefing was...
I don't know if you went in a Monday or Tuesday morning for your briefing, but I think he wanted to hold it up to make sure that we had a legal opinion on what was being done. That was my understanding.
So do you yield, Counselor?
I do yield.
So when, we were there Tuesday, Tuesday, and it was still on our agenda, but after the conversation and the information that Counselor Dionne had about the issue with May.
Right.
Then they decided to pull it, Attorney Rumsey was not there.
Okay.
At our briefing, he was already on vacation. And you're correct, that some of the last Park Board Commissioners that were put on, they did not have an expiration. They should have had an expiration. I know that the administration is trying to correct that now. The ones they had to send down do have an expiration, and perhaps that's what the Park Board was trying to do, was to comply with mass general law on their own because it wasn't done by the prior administration.
But if they were going to comply, it had to be one leaving every year, not a five-year. And if there were going to be terms on it, that would have had to come to the council for a vote to see all the terms and the expiration dates of, of all of them. I mean, I give the mayor credit that he held it off until we get legal and we get a legal opinion on it because we need to start following the law. The next item on our agenda, well, below on our agenda, is going to talk about boards and commissions. And the things that I've researched, this is, a lot of these boards and commissions, things are very convoluted, similar to that. And these items all have to be addressed. But whatever the mayor decides legally needs to be done, you know, it's his choice. He's the one that appoints people. I mean, we confirm them, but it, he ultimately is the one that appoints. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
I just want to make one more comment. So in that briefing, I did say, and you weren't there, so you wouldn't know this.
No.
I, I told the mayor, I said, as far as I'm concerned, from my position, I am taking all personalities, all people, out of this conversation. I only want to discuss mass general law, the conflict with our ordinances, and the fact that we truly don't even know at this point who's on, who's not on, whose term began, when it's ending. Because if you go by mass general law and had it been done properly initially, everybody would change on a different year, but anybody that was appointed or reappointed after the fact would automatically have a five-year term. So anyways, so we just decided that, yes, in fact, it was too convoluted, and, and more research needs to be done, and we just need to get it straight. With that, I yield.
I just would make a suggestion that a copy of that letter be forwarded to the legal department. I don't know if that has to be in a form of a motion. It's really not on our agenda, so we can't vote on it. I don't even know if technically talking about it as much as we all did, because it's not on the agenda, usually when people submit citizen input.
Related to each other.
The input that they're submitting is input that's on the agenda.
Yeah.
So for that to even come to this committee, I don't even know, quite frankly, if we violated an open meeting law by discussing it as much as we did.
So point.
I don't know.
You know, just to make a point, you know, that's, that's part of the reason why I asked ahead of time.
Yeah.
You know, if we could talk about this because I wanted to make sure, maybe we'd talk about it when it's on the agenda.
And I think the chairman did that as well, immediately thinking, should this be here?
Yeah.
But, you know, we do allow citizens' input.
They can input to whatever meeting they want.
One more.
Madam Clerk, you'll sign that?
I'll forward this copy to Corporation Council.
And the mayor, please.
The only thing I'd like to mention, though, is on our agenda, we are clearly talking about boards and ordinances and appointments.
True.
So this does relate to those two topics.
Good.
So I, I don't know.
You're correct.
So with that, I yield.
Okay. All right. Why do I have two of these? Item two on the agenda is the minutes from the June 9th, 2020 meeting.
Motion to adopt the minutes of the June 9th, 2020 meeting.
Motion adopted by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Lee. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Can I get a motion to...
Motion to take out of order?
Yes. Items six and seven?
Motion to take items six and seven out of order.
Second.
Motion to take items six and seven out of order, made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Dionne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. Item six is the proposed ordinance traffic in handicap parking, which was referred to us on July 14th. Got to it. This is a section which relates to handicap parking, some amendments, and these are the new amendments. Correct, Ms. Fer. Item six is the new handicap spots.
Have any questions? Motion to adopt the handicap parking.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Dionne. We need an emergency preamble for this, Madam Clerk?
Yes, please.
We have a motion to adopt with emergency preamble.
Motion to adopt with emergency preamble.
Made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Dionne. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. Item seven. It's also relates to handicap parking. These are handicap parking spaces that are going to be taken away. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'd make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Dionne, seconded by Counselor Lee. Any discussion? All?
Just, just, just so you know, I have, I must have an old agenda in front of me, so I'm looking at the one on my phone right now, just to...
You don't have that...
No, I have an old one. So I, I'm just looking at the one that was sent to me, an email.
Counselor Kadim is coming, just so you know.
I don't have a problem using electronic. I just wanted to let you know that I'm not doing anything else on my phone right now.
An amended agenda sent to you yesterday.
Okay, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna use the one I have digitally, if that's okay by everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Item three is a proposed ordinance for EMT basic position. This was referred on February 11th, 2020.
Motion to adopt.
Hold on.
Second.
I'm just gonna read it first. The Emergency Medical Service Department is asking to add the position of EMT basics to the City Ordinance Chapter 50 personnel. This position existed in the past and was removed as it was no longer being utilized. Due to the shortage of paramedics within the Commonwealth, EMS would like to add back the position and ordinance in the hopes that candidates would continue to pursue their education in paramedic school. Attached is the recommended pay scale and the request from the Director of EMS. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me. The motion to adopt by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Lee. Any discussion? Counselor Dionne, oh, just hold on just a second. Do you want to come down?
Good evening, Chief. Good evening. Thank you for coming. Unless I missed it when I was reading this, I understand why you're asking for this, and I don't disagree with it. My question is, if it's a, if it's a stepping stone to somebody securing their paramedic license, do they have a time limit as to how long they have to obtain their paramedic? And if they don't...
14 months.
Excuse me?
14 months they have to retain their paramedic license.
After they finish school or in total?
They have 14 months upon being hired as a basic EMT with the department as a condition of employment. So it has to be someone that's already enrolled in school. They've already finished their didactical classroom. They're doing their internships, and at that point, we would go to the school and get a recommendation on certain students. We would interview them, hire them on the basis that they would complete their program and obtain their paramedic license within 14 months of the hired date that they are hired with the department.
Because at that point, they're going to be well into...
Correct, correct.
Into the process, okay? Because I know sometimes people need to take their boards more than once, and I don't know how much time elapses, you know, in between and...
Yeah, usually the internship, so when I say it, it's their ride time. So they've done their hospital internship is done. They have to do approximately 300 hours ride time, and then they have the 14 months from the ride time to their actual state exam to acquire the license.
Okay, and, and if they don't succeed, then it's next.
We'd have to let them go.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Director Hala-Vella, do you just want to give a little overview? I know you did at the council meeting when this was before us, but that was back in February. Do you just want to give a overview as to why these are needed?
Okay, and since that, since the February meeting, it's even more, more of a reason now because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the paramedic schools actually shut down in March. Even they shut down the ride time internships, even for nursing, CNA, all that stuff got shut down. So they've just opened it up now. So we've had, there are students that are doing, starting their ride time again for now, so the schools are just starting to amp up. In Phase 3, they've starting to loosen up some of the regulations. So the shortage of paramedics is even more so now than it was prior to the pandemic. And I can tell you that there's probably three ads in the Providence Journal. I spoke to them last week. They've had their ads in the paper, these departments, and they've gotten zero responses from paramedics applying to those departments. So that's why I think this is a little more needed now than so. And I have, right now, I have one open position due to a retirement, and I have four positions to fill. So it's definitely an issue with recruiting.
Well, I am aware that it's definitely a nationwide problem, actually.
It is. It's not just a Commonwealth problem. It's a nationwide problem. You could call any fire department in the state and ask them how they're doing with their recruiting when it comes to paramedics, and, you know, you can hear it from the other chiefs that they've lowered their standard to, not that it's lower, but an EMT basic with the conditions that they obtain their paramedic within a certain amount of time.
Yeah, essentially, they've just changed the parameters.
Yes.
To accommodate the need.
Yeah, and even the state regulations, the state has given a blanket waiver for departments, so they're unable to do the basic paramedic trucks without filling out the applications with, within the Commonwealth also. But there's a huge shortage of paramedics.
Thank you.
Do you yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Anything further?
No, I...
And did you have something?
Yeah, I just think that it's a good idea. It's a way for us to get people to come in as EMTs wanting to go for their paramedic license and, you know, secure them here. I think it's a good idea. I think the pay rate is in line to, honestly, I think for the line of work that they do, it should probably be a little more. I, you know, with so much that's around, especially now. But I think that's a good idea to fill those two positions and get yourself in line to have some paramedics. Good job, Ms. Hala-Vella. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Just for information purposes, the, the money for these salaries comes, does not come from the general fund. It comes from in enterprise.
It's, it's all through the enterprise fund.
Right, and even as they get promoted, it's still going to come from that, correct?
Correct.
So there won't be any general fund money or fire department money at all involved in this process, right? This is for information. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Counselor Kadim?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman. I think I had asked the question when it was referred to committee, but is it the intent to have language either, either in the contract or to have it in ordinance that the EMT basic would be required, would be eligible, but there would be like a three-year requirement to, I guess, go for the testing for paramedic?
Yeah, so basically, in the, the letter that the council, it states that upon hiring, condition of employment would be 14 months upon getting your time position.
All right. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further?
Nope.
Or a motion? Motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. Thank you.
So this will be passed through first reading, just on fire? It'll be passed through first reading.
Yeah, motion to adopt through first reading.
Motion to adopt through first reading.
Second.
Made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Still voted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not leaving, Chief, are you? Can you just stay for the ordinance piece on fire commission?
Item four. Is a resolution on the ordinance legislation review the duties and compensations of all boards and commissions adopted January 14th, 2020. And the resolution says, whereas the City of Fall River has numerous boards and commissions, and whereas members of boards and commissions are compensated for their services, and members of other boards and commissions are not equally compensated or not compensated at all, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation Review the Duties and Compensation of All Boards and Commissions. This was put in by Council Pereira.
I have looked at what our ordinances say. There's nothing in here, mass general laws. You have to go through mass general laws, but I didn't get for every single board or commission. We got from some, but not from all of them. I think that we're probably gonna have to hold off and do these little by little. But if the chief was here before he leaves, to look at the duties of the fire commissioners and the fire chief, et cetera. So if the chief could come down, we have the fire department, the fire board of commissioners, and when it was established, and we have what their duties are. And I don't know that they are following all of these duties. We have three individuals on the commission. This board of fire commissioners, most of them will say if they're paid positions or they're not. This one, it just says three members. Doesn't say if they have to be former firefighters, if it has to be, you know, whoever has to be on the board. It's just three members. The terms have all expired, I believe. It doesn't have an expiration date. It's number four on our agenda packet. I kind of took things out of order. This one is number four. But it has three individuals. The date of appointment on one was 7/8/2010. Another one was 2/13/96, and another one was 8/9/16. And then it has the dates that they were sworn in. It doesn't even have the date of confirmation. Were these people confirmed? I don't know. Do they get paid? I don't know. When do they meet and when was the last meeting? Can you tell us, Chief?
I can't.
What they do?
They get $1,500 a year. They have not had a meeting in over ten years. Originally, they were appointing authority, and then they were taken out. And that was over ten years ago. So basically, their duties now are strictly ceremonial. So we have promotions. We have people get sworn in as new firefighters. Usually, they do that part of it, along with the mayor. But aside from that, their duties are basically been absorbed by me. So now, as the fire chief, I am the appointing authority.
Who took them out, Chief, when you said they were taking?
I believe it was under Mayor Correa, not Jay Zil, Bob Correa.
Bob Correa?
Yes.
So everything that it says here, that the chief will be governed by the provisions of Mass General Law 31, the fire chief shall be the head of the fire department and be responsible for the management and operations, the appointing authority, the member of fire board may appoint, subject to civil service laws and regulations of the Commonwealth and offices of the fire department and fix their duties. The fire commission shall determine the number of officers and the members of the fire department. But they're not doing any of that.
No, they're not. They are strictly ceremonial now.
So it's $1,500 a year for each one?
Yes.
And they haven't had a meeting in ten years that we know of? Okay, so I think maybe we don't need that position anymore? We're looking at ways to save money. I mean, nice to have ceremonial, I guess, but can they go? There are other boards that meet monthly, that meet, you know, a couple of times a month, maybe, like reassessors or whatever. And some boards, the park board, they meet once a month, and they don't get paid. I don't know. I think I'd like to refer this to legal too, to see what mass general law says, and look at, you know, revisiting something like this.
Sure.
That's the only question, but I just wanted to hear from you. All they are is ceremonial, and it was taken out when Bob Correa was mayor, when we had Mayor Bob Correa.
I'm pretty sure that was when it was taken out.
But nothing came down to change anything. How did it get taken out? There was never a vote. I was here during Bob Correa's time here, and I don't recall anything ever coming down to say that this was gonna change. Maybe through the chairman to the clerk. If you could check, was there something that came down to the council? I don't recall it.
I will check with my administrative assistant, Richie LeVette, because obviously, he was around then when it happened.
Right.
So he probably has something in his files, and I'll check on that.
All right. Thank you, Chief. I don't have any other questions. I yield, Madam Clerk.
I just have one question.
Counselor Dian?
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So do you think where this has become strictly a ceremonial thing, and they don't meet, that $1,500 a year is warranted? Or should it just be a board that people do it out of the goodness of their heart, like other boards?
That's your determination.
Well, being somebody who did it for nothing, I think I can argue for somebody doing it for nothing. With that, I yield.
Counselor Kadim?
I agree with Counselor Pereira. I think, you know, obviously, this is a good resolution. I think what we should really do is take the opportunity to do this right and refer this back to Cooperation Council and have him give us a list of, I guess, responsibilities and almost like a job description in terms of what these committees are supposed to be doing and commissions. And just compare that to Massachusetts general laws, see which of the committees are absolutely required by general laws to be in existence. And then I think at that point, we should just really kind of take a look to make sure that the ordinance reflects what the responsibilities are for each of these commissions. Because some of these commissions, again, I mean, it's nice to have ceremonial, but I think some of these have really kind of outlived the useful life of some of these committees, so maybe we can kind of streamline them. I mean, if we've got an ordinance that essentially makes our fire chief a strong chief, with the exception, obviously, he doesn't have the appointment authority, but he, the mayor has the appointment authority for the firefighters. He essentially is a strong chief. I would say that we would allow the chief to do his job, right? I don't know that we need a fire commission to have him run by all the different tasks that he wants to perform and ideas. You know, I think those are the conversations that should be had with the administration, come down to the council for funding, things of that nature. But if there is a specific responsibility that's outlined in general law, or if we feel like the board of fire commissioners, and I'm talking about all the boards, but this is the one we were just talking about, that there is something specific and something beneficial that is offered up as the board, then we should have those conversations before we eliminate them. But I think what we're starting to see now is that there is really less and less individuals that are willing to participate in civic duties, right? And it's hard to get individuals who are, and I use air quotations, but qualified to be in these positions that want to offer up and take their time and really just kind of donate their time to the municipality to help serve on these boards. So I think if we can kind of streamline this, maybe we get a better pool of individuals who are really willing to support for all the time and effort to be on these various boards, whether paid or not paid, to help the city. And then we can really kind of judge and pull from a larger pool of candidates to sit on these. And then at that point, we can figure out which boards should be paid, how much they should be paid. Because I agree with you, I think we've got to be a little bit more consistent on who's getting paid, who's not getting paid. And to have a board paid $1,500 for each member, and, was it each member, or?
Each member.
Each member.
Each member and then not meet for ten years, that's.
Hundred and fifty.
It's called free money. So, you know, I would agree with that. I'd like to make a motion that we refer all these boards and commissions to Cooperation Council and have him review the responsibilities and requirements for each of the boards and review that and compare that to Massachusetts general law, and give us a list of roles and responsibilities for the boards and the general laws associated with it. And that way, we can kind of review the ordinance and make the adjustments as we see fit.
I would second that motion.
Motion made to forward to Cooperation Council, made by Council Kadim, seconded by Council Dian. Any discussion?
Can I?
Council Lee had his hand up, sorry.
This is not in regards to discussion towards Counselor Seat One's motion, but just to the, just to the agenda in general. Does mass general law define what boards need to be paid and what does not need to be paid? Is that, is that, is that something that's there through specifically?
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
Just so, some boards, so Massachusetts general law with boards, some of the general laws will state how much somebody needs to be paid. Others are just silent, so it really is, it really is up to the municipality. But there are certain boards that have to be paid a certain stipend.
So we, so we have the, we're gonna have, in many of these cases, the autonomy to decide whether or not they're paid or not paid.
Correct.
And we're not going against any mass general laws to do so. So that would bring the valuable, you know, conversation down from Cooperation Council. The other thing, too, is the effectiveness of the boards. I think, I mean, I think that's really, that's my, that's my point of contention is, are we, are these boards doing anything? Is it just more government, you know, expansion without any real actual, you know, value to the table? I've seen, I've looked at some of these board names, and I've noticed that they'll get appointed a certain year during an election year or so, and they're on the board, and that's all. They just have the title, and that's it. And they're not doing anything with that title other than using it in their election, you know? Or to get some type of publicity. So I'm hoping that we can shed that a little bit, because I think it just makes our process a lot better, too. So I yield.
Counselor, just so you know, if, I'm not sure if you saw it, there is a list of what they get paid by ordinance.
Yeah, I know. I got the old agenda, but I'm trying to get through it.
This should be in the new one. This should be in the one you had.
All right, cool.
Item four.
Thank you.
Sweet, I'm sorry, do you yield, Counselor?
Yeah, I did. I yield, yeah.
Counselor Pereira?
Okay, so I have, you know, started to look at a lot of these boards and commissions, and some of what I'm finding is, for example, the Council on Aging Board. They can have up to 11 members, and they do a lot of work. You know, they meet a couple of times a month. They, they know what their job descriptions are. It's pretty specific. They will know through, but it says that they are under the Director of Community Services. But they have to look at what kinds of services are being provided to the elderly. And that board seems to be a pretty active board. You know, the Board of Appeals, pretty active. The Board of Assessors really blew my mind. It said the Board of Assessors shall report at such times as required by the mayor and the city council shall at least once a month make a complete report to the mayor and the city council of all the property in its care and of its management thereof. And such report shall contain all offers made for rentals or purchases of such properties received by the Board of Assessors. I've never seen any, anything come down where the Board of Assessors is renting property. I mean, they, the water department leased property to that rowing company. Does that go to the Board of Assessors? Or does that go to the water department, or does that go to our general fund? And they are supposed to collect all the rental money and deposit it with the city treasurer within 48 hours. I did have the opportunity to speak to Richard Gonzalez, who serves on the Board of Assessors, and also to Nancy Heino. And she recalls, like, years and years ago, through the Mass Housing Authority, some of the homes that they were getting rid of, as I remember, that we would get a couple hundred thousand a year, and we would bring it to the, well, where did that money go? It's like, we don't even know where this money, she said that hasn't happened in years. But if it was happening, what happened that it's not happening? Was it short term? I don't know. And then the Commission on Disability, there is a position that has, the term has expired. And that also says not less than five or more than 13 members. And it talks there about if you have, if somebody parks in a handicap, they get that money to do different things. But it's almost like they should be working with John Perry or, and look at, do we have sidewalks that have ramps accessible? So how do those two function together? So when we're doing this, should we say that once every six months, they have a meeting with another department to kind of link things together? And the Community Preservation Act, they still have a housing authority designate that is not on here. And you have, that one is pretty specific. Somebody from conservation, somebody from the park board, a council appointees, historical commission, mayoral appointee. But those there, there's one, two, three, four, five positions that have expired. And I talked to Mr. Lima, Al Lima, about this, and there's different things that they're working on and trying to do as well. I don't know how much the Board of Assessors makes. It says they're paid board. And I don't know if the community preservation, if they make any money. But it's almost like when I talked to Mr. Lima, he said, we should be talking about the dream stuff. What else can we do to preserve, you know, and be more active and interact more with different agencies? Which I agree with him. Then there's the Cable Advisory Committee. Now, the Cable Advisory Committee, I asked the clerk, because we didn't have anything, was, you know, how it was established. And of course, the cable contract is like over 100 pages. We're supposed to be in negotiations with Cable. Everybody complains about how expensive cable is. We asked Cable if they could give us free internet to some homes with kids that are working from home and don't have access to an internet. And the only person on the board, on the advisory board, is Pat Casey. So I called Pat and said, Pat, what's going on with the advisory board? She said, I was never on that. I said, yeah, in 2000, you were put on by Lambert. So I never went to a meeting. And when I looked at other, another paper that came, Al Alves was on it, God rest his soul, and some other people, but nothing was done. And so her, her term has expired. She certainly said, I'll be willing to help out on any board, so that's an option. And Alan Rumsey, Attorney Rumsey, was just put on in March of 2020. I don't know that that came before the board. I don't remember that coming before the board, but I think it was part of him being the attorney, and there needs to be an attorney on it. And the other one was the Tree Commission. I mean, we have a whole thing on trees. And this is kind of a sore spot for me, because we're supposed to have an urban tree commission. And who had done that was Mary Ann Wardell. And we have a tree farm. But yeah, in the city, you have the cemetery department that cuts trees. And you have Mr. Perry, if there's a tree somewhere, he'll send somebody. And then you have Mr. Gallagher. I mean, I saw the city electrician and the city painter cutting down three trees near Candaeus Fire Station. And what I heard was the trees were rotted, the trees have ants. I called the chief and said, do you know they're cutting down trees? Chief had no idea. Then I heard there was ants in the building. You had complaints of ants all over that building. And the condenser, I don't know if it was for air conditioning, was put inside the building instead of outside the building, which I've never seen condensers in a building. Usually, they're outside. But he was making room, because in the future, we might put the condenser there. But you cut the tree and you leave the stumps. And because I started looking at this, I went to Eastern Avenue. They had cut three trees along one side of the fire station there. And the other side of the fire station, they cut down an apple tree. And one of the firemen said, you know, he knows a little bit about plants and stuff and trees, and he said, to be honest with you, it was an apple tree that needed to be trimmed, but he didn't have to cut it down. People took the apples off of that. And he said at Peanuts Park, they planted three trees together, but you can't plant oaks and maples and those kind of trees together because their roots kill each other. Fruit trees can be planted pretty close, but others can't. We do have an arborist, and we did get a stump grinder. I don't know if Council Kadim or Council Liberty remembers, coming before, it was a few years ago, about we need a stump grinder. And as I drive around the city, I cannot believe the amount of stumps all over the place. If you expect residents to take pride in their property and take pride in our community, I think we need to do that, too. So I think it's pretty incomplete, the planning board and other boards. And I also think some of these commissions may be a bit obsolete. And maybe we need to have a commission to look at energy costs or an energy committee that people are focused on that. Or maybe a committee to look at computer things, or a committee, you know, to do other things that are more in sync with the times changing. And maybe some of them need to be condensed. This is gonna take a lot of work to get it done right. But anyway, I just, I think that we need to look at all stuff like that. So I'm in agreement with Council Kadim's motion to refer it to Cooperation Council, get mass general laws, and work on this little by little. I don't think we can even put everything on one ordinance committee, but maybe if we do three at a time, then eventually, we'll get it done. But we'll take our time and we'll do it right.
Do you yield, Counselor?
With that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? Your motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Still voted.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Good night. Thank you.
Item five is a resolution, Committee on Ordinances and Legislation Review. Item five is a resolution, Committee on Ordinances and Legislation Review City Ordinances Relative to the Confirmation of Appointments. This was adopted January 14, 2020, also by Council Pereira. Whereas Section 2-10 of the City Charter, City Council Confirmation of Certain Appointments states, the mayor shall refer to the city council and simultaneously file with the city clerk the name of each person the mayor desires to appoint as a city officer, department head, or as a member of a multiple-member body. Appointments made by the mayor shall become effective on the 45th day after the date on which notice of the proposed appointment was filed with the city clerk unless approved or rejected by the city council within 45 days. All individuals appointed to a multiple-member body shall be residents of the city. If an appointed individual removes from the city, the position shall be immediately deemed vacant. Now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation Review City Ordinances Relative to the Confirmation of Certain Appointments.
Madam Chair? I think that that is, those resolutions kind of are combined.
Yep. Do you want to send this with?
So I would just make a motion, they, you know, refer this all to Cooperation Council and have him look at it.
Second.
Motion made by Council Pereira, referred to Corporation Council, seconded by Council Lee. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Item eight, Proposed Ordinance Fiscal Year 2021 Water and Sewer Rates, which was referred Attached, please see, the Water and Sewer Rates that support the budget that was approved by you, supposed to Mayor Coogan, and passed by the city council. These rates support the revised budget for the Water and Sewer Division. I would request that these rates be approved as soon as possible so that they can be effective as we have already started the fiscal '21 budget, and any delays would have an impact to the revenues of the fiscal '21 budget. Council Kadim?
So the rates that you have before us are reflective of the budget that was passed, is that correct?
That's correct, Counselor.
Okay. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, made by Council Kadim. Second, and Council Pereira has gone somewhere.
We can wait for her to return to the room.
I'm sorry, I didn't see her, that she left. I apologize.
Do you want to take a two-minute recess?
I mean, are you going to present something other than the rates that were already?
Nope.
Nothing new, right?
Again, are the revised rates that were already proposed at the last ordinance committee meeting. They support the revised budget that was approved by the council.
And this presentation is a piece of the original overall presentation.
Okay.
Yep, so just to, if you'd like, just to run through, we can. So the total budget that was approved by the council for the water budget was $13,615,264, a 1.8% increase from FY '20 budget. The water rates that support that budget is a water rate of $3.43 per CCF. That's a 19 cent increase from FY '20. The effects on the average single-family household is $10.07 per year, $2.52 per quarter, or 84 cents per month. So the one thing that the council does know is that we're kind of behind the times a little bit here with getting these rates approved by the time it goes through ordinance committee and then first reading, second reading. If it doesn't get an emergency preamble, we'll be looking at, I plan that we'll be looking at about two months of lost revenue in the water.
So with that, not to cut you off, motion to approve the rates effective July 1, 2020.
Motion made. Council Kadim to approve the rates effective July 1. Do you have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Council Kadim, you still have the floor.
I don't know, I yield that, was that?
That's it.
I just don't want to belabor the point. I mean, I think we've had this conversation at least 10 times, so.
Anything further? Any discussion? Yes, I'd just like to add emergency preamble to that.
Yeah, we can.
Motion to adopt the rates effective July 1 with emergency preamble, made by Council Kadim, seconded by myself. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay. Roll call on the motion to pass the Water and Sewer Rates effective July 1 of '20 with an emergency preamble. Council Kadim?
Yes.
Council Dion?
No.
Council Lee?
No.
Council Lee?
I said no, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Council Pereira?
No.
Chair Liberty LaBeau?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Do you have another motion?
I'd make a motion to send it to full council with three no's and two yeses.
Second.
Motion to send it to full council.
Or with no decision.
You could send it for action.
Can't just leave it here.
No, you could send it for action without a recommendation.
Yes, I would do that.
Motion to send a council for action with no recommendation, made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Lee. Any discussion? All in favor? Do we need a roll call for that, do we? Madam Clerk, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed, Counselor?
Yeah, I think we should have a recommendation.
I'm also opposed. Counselor?
Did you want a roll call?
Yeah, roll call, please.
On sending the proposed ordinance for action without a recommendation? Council Kadim?
No.
Council Dion?
Yes.
Council Lee?
Yes.
Council Pereira?
Yes.
Chair Liberty LaBeau?
No.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, made by Council Kadim, seconded by?
Second.
Council Lee, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted.